Welcome to the normal development. It's lovely to see you. Um, welcome to the regular meeting of the board of education for Monday, April 10th, two thousand and seventeen. We will call this afternoon.
Okay Simmons. Oda, here. Mark, present. Horace, here. Huckabee, here. Correto.
Here in the forum is present. First on the agenda, we have student recognition. Is that correct?
I'm going to ask for representative from our junior high command. Ms. Mountain is going to introduce girls volleyball for our college.
Including more into our parents, we are so happy to have our seventh grade boys volleyball team and also our eighth grade girls volleyball team. Our eighth grade girls volleyball team went to regionals and they represented us at the state championship. So we're grateful for very proud of our eighth grade girls volleyball team and also our boys volleyball team. There's really not a regional championship for our boys volleyball team. Not a lot of schools have boys volleyball, but our boys did very, very well. They only had one loss throughout the whole season and if there was a state championship, Parker would have been representing our boys volleyball team. Okay, this time we're to call Coach Sipin. She is going to introduce our boys volleyball team. And then after Coach Sipin, we have Coach Tonsing, who's going to recognize and introduce our eighth grade girls volleyball team.
Hi, good evening. Boys, you want to stand up? So the two seventh, twelfth, and seventeenth mark for seventh grade boys volleyball team, Tripp, Shock, Wyler, Cameron Reed, Eric Steiner, Mychee Glover, Thomas Kedencian, Sean Cohen, Ian Horr, Declan Nolan, Sterling Schumpert, and Juan Cain Soria. Congratulations on your seat.
We've got some certificates for you guys, so if you can come on up into the middle and be congratulating our workers, then we'll hand out those certificates.
Thank you. You might try to take a picture of us. I do recognize.
I'll stand right here. We'll take a picture that gives you.
They didn't help me. They said they are impressive group. They are first to go down as they twice. They went down seventh grade and they were able to get there, but they can't play well. Eighth grade, well, they were amazing. They are, I'm so proud of this group. They improved so well. They play hard. You might argue a little bit here and there, but they are an amazing group. I wouldn't trade them for the world. They're awesome. I'm a member, having us in that. That was enough. Okay, so they're going to be, they will play in high school. Some are going to play basketball, some will play tennis, and some are going to play basketball. So they're going to do great. Very proud of them. It's awesome.
City gentlemen, please come up. City gentlemen, city gentlemen. Now, now's not here, but now it's for our team. Eleanor, where's Eleanor? Faith, where's Faith? Laura, the very girl.
That's awesome. That's really good. Come on, Jenson. Come on now. Jenson Moore. Jackie Clubcheck, this is your girl Jackie. Lexi Pugh, I'm a senior pre-graduate. Oh, Jane Baggers, go with Jane. Abby Grant, I'm here. Raven, come on, Raven. Peyton, right, where's there's Peyton. Great enough also, well, one of the cycles. So that's very close.
One, two, three.
All right, one more. All right. Thank you. Next in the agenda, we have audience comments. We do not have anyone sign up for audience comments. We move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report.
Dr. Pop. We have a, well, first of all, welcome everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. We've got a rather lengthy agenda, so I will be very brief. Want to welcome Dr. Dana Smith into the district today. He spent the day here. We got a lot of good work done and he's got a number of transition days that he'll continue to do, so we look forward to continuing. I'm going to have a great smooth transition, so welcome, sir. Also, I want to say congratulations to Carol Briggs and Steve Paradis, Michelle Blackman and Cameron Nelson, who are likely to serve on our next board. And so we will have a special board meeting on May 1st. That will be the last meeting for this board. We'll close out business. I anticipate that there will not be much business to do that night, save approving some minutes is what we have on the agenda currently, unless something happens between now and then. But that'll be a brief meeting. We'll honor our board members who are retiring from this position. We will then reconstitute our board. So what that means is that I am dangerous for a moment. I get the gavel, I take over, and then if you elect the president, then I hand the gavel right back off to somebody else. So that is what we will do on May 1st. Before May 1st, though, we have a committee of the whole scheduled for April 24th, and we're going to make that into a special meeting also, because we need to do some action that night. The primary piece of action on that agenda will be to hire a junior high principal for next year. So that is why we need to get to change that to an action meeting. I may have a couple of other items on there related to approval of some additional FTE for next year, some additional staff for next year. I'll make sure the board is briefed on that before we get there. Otherwise, the committee of the whole has a number of, that meeting had a number of other informational topics on it. That would be very relevant moving forward through the new board. So those are the upcoming, upcoming pieces. Well, we had some great student recognition tonight. In our very near future, we'll be recognizing our newest, open apple winner. She is scheduled to receive that award officially in, well, she's received the award, now she'll be honored. He made a public broadcast presentation, so we're looking forward to that. We'll bring her to a board meeting so we can appropriately honor her. Other than that, we have, again, as we indicated, a lot of items on the agenda. There's one small change to the consent agenda that I asked Steve earlier to, when he does the consent agenda as presented, to take off one item in minutes that we don't have minutes in the package, so we want to remove. And that would be the March 13th executive session minutes. But to the board, thank you for your service. Thanks for all the good things you do for our kids. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to our next agenda item, which is in fact the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda and... I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented, with the exception of the exclusion for the executive session minutes for March 13th, 2017. First by Mr. Torres, second by Mr. Huckabee. Are there any discussion, questions, comments? We will call this afternoon.
Hi, good evening. Boys, you want to stand up? So the two seventh, twelfth, and seventeenth mark for seventh grade boys volleyball team, Tripp, Shock, Wyler, Cameron Reed, Eric Steiner, Mychee Glover, Thomas Kedencian, Sean Cohen, Ian Horr, Declan Nolan, Sterling Schumpert, and Juan Cain Soria. Congratulations on your seat.
We have, we've got some certificates for you guys, so if you can come on up into the middle and be congratulating our workers, then we'll hand out those certificates.
Thank you so much volleyball teams. Next in the agenda, we have the audience comments. We do not have anyone sign up for audience comments. We move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Pop.
We have a, well, first of all, welcome everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. We've got a rather lengthy agenda, so I will be very brief. Want to welcome Dr. Dana Smith into the district today. He spent the day here. We got a lot of good work done and he's got a number of transition days that he'll continue to do, so we look forward to continuing. Having a great smooth transition, so welcome, sir. Also, I want to say congratulations to Carol Briggs and Steve Paradis, Meeshalyn Blackman and Cameron Nelson, who are likely to serve on our next board. And so we will have a special board meeting on May 1st. That will be the last meeting for this board. We'll close out business. I anticipate that there will not be much business to do that night, save approving some minutes is what we have on the agenda currently, unless something happens between now and then. But that'll be a brief meeting. We'll honor our board members who are retiring from this position. We will then reconstitute our board. So what that means is that I am dangerous for a moment. I get the gavel, I take over, and then if you elect the president, then I hand the gavel right back off to somebody else. So that is what we will do on May 1st. Before May 1st, though, we have a committee of the whole scheduled for April 24th, and we're going to make that into a special meeting also, because we need to do some action that night. The primary piece of action on that agenda will be to hire a junior high principal for next year. So that is why we need to get to change that to an action meeting. I may have a couple of other items on there related to approval of some additional FTE for next year, some additional staff for next year. I'll make sure the board is briefed on that before we get there. Otherwise, the committee of the whole has a number of, that meeting had a number of other informational topics on it. That would be very relevant moving forward through the new board. So those are the upcoming, upcoming pieces. While we had some great student recognition tonight, in our very near future, we'll be recognizing our newest, open apple winner. She is scheduled to receive that award officially in, well, she's received the award, now she'll be honored. He made a public broadcast presentation, so we're looking forward to that. We'll bring her to a board meeting so we can appropriately honor her. Other than that, we have, again, as we indicated, a lot of items on the agenda. There's one small change to the consent agenda that I asked Steve earlier to, when he does the consent agenda as presented, to take off one item in minutes that we don't have minutes in the package, so we want to remove. And that would be the March 13th executive session minutes. But to the board, thank you for your service. Thanks for all the good things you do for our kids. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to our next agenda item, which is in fact the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda and... I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented, with the exception of the exclusion for the executive session minutes for March 13th, 2017. First by Mr. Torres, second by Mr. Huckabee. Are there any discussion, questions, comments? We will call this afternoon.
Hi, good evening. Boys, you want to stand up? So the two seventh, twelfth, and seventeenth mark for seventh grade boys volleyball team, Tripp, Shock, Wyler, Cameron Reed, Eric Steiner, Mychee Glover, Thomas Kedencian, Sean Cohen, Ian Horr, Declan Nolan, Sterling Schumpert, and Juan Cain Soria. Congratulations on your seat.
We have, we've got some certificates for you guys, so if you can come on up into the middle and be congratulating our workers, then we'll hand out those certificates. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to our next agenda item, which is in fact the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda and... I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented, with the exception of the exclusion for the executive session minutes for March 13th, 2017. First by Mr. Torres, second by Mr. Huckabee. Are there any discussion, questions, comments? We will call this afternoon.
Hi, good evening. Boys, you want to stand up? So the two seventh, twelfth, and seventeenth mark for seventh grade boys volleyball team, Tripp, Shock, Wyler, Cameron Reed, Eric Steiner, Mychee Glover, Thomas Kedencian, Sean Cohen, Ian Horr, Declan Nolan, Sterling Schumpert, and Juan Cain Soria. Congratulations on your seat.
Next in the agenda, we have information, action items. First is approval of bills this month. Bills were, I'm sorry. So payroll was part of the, sorry. Payroll was part of the consent agenda. It was item C approval of payroll. Okay, so as I said before, this month's bills were examined thoroughly by Mr. Marks. Mr. Marks?
Yes, I can answer to the bills this month, as again, it does every federal board, it's assigned no person to do it specifically. And I recommend that bills and approve the bills in the amount of $733,331.70 for the month of April.
My second. Is there any discussion? Can we roll call this afternoon?
Sorry, I did one thing. If you probably, you notice, and I want to bring this, suggest that we either add this on as an agenda item or assign it to a staff person who will need to bring it back to the board. So our homeless transportation for this pay period is $25,000. That's been just inching its way upward. It is required by law, it's something that we must do. I recommend that we look at how we're providing that transportation and if there are some suggestions for maybe a more cost-effective way for us to move that program forward, comply with the law, and yet keep better track of our expenditures on there. Maybe do a little historical analysis. It's been three, three years, four? Three, I think you're right. Four. It was, it was a Bolivian which law, so it's been that long. So maybe a little history on how expensive it is about.
Yes, absolutely. And you know what, I'll ask Robin to do a presentation here, maybe in this next committee of the whole. It's a great one to revisit. She'll talk about the different, the different costs, whether you're, because we're cost-sharing with districts that we're sending to, cost-sharing with districts where we're sending from, and then what are our methods of transportation and how we make all that happen.
I do work waiting until a new board is seated, because that kind of background context will be valuable if a new board members come in.
So maybe the may count, may count.
Just, just saying.
That's a good idea. Are there any other comments, questions? We will call this afternoon.
Simmons?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of audit commitment letter. I will entertain a motion to engage legacy professionals of LLP, reforming annual financial audit for the year end, June 30th, 2017, at a maximum cost of $12,160. Secondly, first. Secondly, Mr. Torres. Is there any discussion? We will call this afternoon.
Okay, Parks?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes.
Correto?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of audit commitment letter. I will entertain a motion to engage legacy professionals of LLP, reforming annual financial audit for the year end, June 30th, 2017, at a maximum cost of $12,160. Secondly, first. Secondly, Mr. Torres. Is there any discussion? We will call this afternoon.
Okay, Parks?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes.
Correto?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, go on, Mr. Reed. Here's a question. Tactical question. Yes. Okay. Next in the agenda, next in the agenda, we have summer school update. Haley Martin will take over.
Hi, good evening. Could you kind of present from the, by the table? Yeah, thank you. Either the podium or the table. Whatever. I'm very excited to share information with you tonight about Summer Academy 2017. We have had a lot of collaborative meetings recently, have talked a lot about how we can make Summer Academy most valuable for our students. A lot of conversations about student growth, making it an engaging experience for students that they enjoy, having a rigorous curriculum. And so we're involved about the communication plan tonight, the timeline, professional development, students, staffing, curriculum, and celebrating Summer Academy. Any questions at the end? First of all, communication, very important. In April and May, we will have email class going home with the flyer and the registration form, and that's going to go to everyone in the district. We will have phone class going to everyone in the district. We will put the flyer and registration form on the website. And then mailed home will be a flyer, registration form, and a letter to any student who are recommended. So we have both the onsite Summer Academy and virtual Summer Academy, and these are open to absolutely anyone in the district. Recommended students are any students who scored in the 35th percentile and below on the winter math. Then I ask for teacher recommendations, because we know that math scores are just one piece of the big puzzle. So we ask teachers if they would also recommend that the student go, or no, they don't believe it would be beneficial. So if the students fit both those categories, then they are recommended for Summer Academy and they will receive a mailed letter. And then any students who are family are automatically recommended and receive a letter. And then in addition, any students who have extended school year in their IUPs will receive a letter for Summer Academy. So the timeline, April and May will be consistent communication, continued preparation and sending with all the different departments in the district. May 9th, we will have a registration night at Parker. For those who feel more comfortable registering in person, I will be there. They can come, they can ask questions. So that will be from 3:30 to 6:30 at Parker that night. And we will make sure to advertise for that on the website, phone class, email class. May 19th will be the registration deadline, so that we can get our final count and prepare. And then June 15th, the teachers come in, it's just the Summer Academy teachers, and we'll have some professional development, where we will get the data about their students in their hands, you will look at that. We're going to do some goal setting. We're going to look at the curriculum. I'm going to talk about the curriculum more, but they're going to come in and do some PD for our teachers, so they feel comfortable with the Summer Academy curriculum. And then at night, we're going to do some in-person parent informationals for both the onsite and the virtual academies. And then Summer Academy actually runs from June 19th to July 27th. It's Monday through Thursday, it's like it has been in the past, 8:30 to 11:30. So for staffing, we need PLA and math teachers, special education teachers, and PLL teacher, virtual teachers, career professionals, nurses, speech pad, and OTPT. So we have already reached out, and we're already full for staffing, depending on the numbers that we get from registration, so. So the curriculum, I have set up the curriculum over here, so I will share it with you, so you can look at it. Yeah. Okay, so for literature, we went with Spolastic Lit Camp. This was a really exciting program. They came and talked to us, they were very helpful. They're coming to do the PD, and it's all centered around a 90-minute block, a lesson for the students, and it has independent in it, it has shared, it has writing, it has vocabulary, it has opening and closings. So it's very structured to make sure to get all the areas behind. And then it also has sets of books, so that we can get the books in the students' hands. So I have those over there also. So that's the Lit Camp. And then we also get in every child a computer book that we're going to give to all the teachers at the PD and talk about that, first and reading to prepare. So that's the literature PLA side of it. V-Math is what we went with for the 90-minute math block. Again, it is more structured than previous years of summer school. It has an independent section, it has concepts, it has lessons. Teachers will have accountability, they'll need to progress through this curriculum throughout the six weeks. So it's just more structured than in the past. They have assessments that go along with them. The students will build writing portfolios, they have folders. So it just brings a lot more rigor, in my opinion, than the past, than what I've been apart with it. So that's the curriculum. Then that's the onsite Academy. Virtual Summer Academy, we will continue to have. That's where the virtual teachers reach out for an introduction email, a parent informational, and then they have three face-to-face meetings, the initial, the midpoint, and the final. They also have weekly communication with parents and updates on progress. And for that, I looked back at the data from the basketball leaders on virtual, the students did a survey for you, and so did the parents. And the data overwhelmingly said they really liked the virtual idea, they liked exposing their students to an online kind of lesson and curriculum. However, they did not feel like obviously was the best program to fit the virtual, they struggled with, they weren't as motivated with it. So we decided that for ELA, we were going to try to achieve 3,000, for math, we're going to use CompCavity, the personalized tabs for the students. Achieve 3,000, some teachers are looking at that right now in our district, are piloting it, a couple in my building. So I spent time talking to the students about it, what they liked. They said they liked Achieve, they were excited about it, they shared with me about it, and there was engagement and interest, the teachers really liked it, they said the reports are easy. So this is kind of how it looks, how it's set up, is there's a polling question, and then the articles. I asked the students out and the teachers, and they're really high interest. It's interesting to the students, they like to read about it, it's current for them. Then afterward, there's an activity, questions or a Venn diagram, and then there's always a writing component, a thought question. It includes opinion and things like that. It gets students more involved in just right and wrong answers, and really brings in that writing. So that's Achieve. And then CompCavity is something that our teachers have used in the past, but it's really come a long way in the past couple of years, being able to personalize tabs based on what students need, and ranging from the little ones all the way up to the older students, and being challenging, engaging, engaging, and that includes videos and so forth. So that's the virtual component. And then lastly... It includes opinion and things like that, it seems more involved in just right and wrong answers, and really brings in that writing, so. That's Achieve. And then Khan Academy is something that our teachers have used in the past, but it's really come a long way in the past couple of years, being able to personalize tabs based on what students need, and ranging from, um, the little ones all the way up to the older students, and being challenging, engaging, engaging, um, and that includes videos and so forth. That's the virtual component. And then lastly, I just think something that Summer Academy needed is just like some spark, like the students are coming, it's during their summer, we need to get them excited about it. We need to engage them, we need to make them feel, you know, like they're excited about it. So, um, we have some backpacks here, drawstring backpacks, and you get to be the first ones to receive these, and you can advertise with these, wear these around to the students.
Bring that. Awesome.
So, there you go. And then additional... Um, and then additionally, we have, um, wristbands, uh, it has Lit Camp on it. Um, and we're going to make sure on the last day of Summer Academy to have a little celebration, where we have Italian ice or something, and celebrate all the hard work that they put into it, and make them enjoy it, and maybe even want to hope out the next year, which would be really great. Uh, we're going to hashtag #161SummerAcademy, so look out for the fun stuff that we're doing. I'm really excited about it, so. Any questions?
I do have one.
Yeah.
So, the curriculum that was chosen for the Summer Academy, my guess is that it's going to bridge over to the normal school year or tie in to the normal school year. Or the math, the Khan Academy, they were all of that, is that correct?
Yeah, and some of it started from things that we're already doing. So, Achieve 3000, we're piloting at Parker, and then our, some of our elementary schools are also using it as well. They have a summer intensive program, um, that's specific for the summer course that we said let's try for our summer school students as well. Um, Scholastic is our source for our classroom libraries as well, so we're hoping that all of these things will lead into each other.
Can you talk a little bit about, um, what's, what's different between this program and what we did last year? And I'm sorry, and then how we plan to evaluate this program?
Yes, absolutely. Um, in the past, the curriculum was not as structured. Um, they would use a little bit of Oxy, and it's kind of what the teachers, you know, planned. It wasn't like this where there were lessons each day, there were books that accompanied it, or the students have those, um, they have curriculum that they need to get through, they have concepts that they need to move through, and math, um, there wasn't as much accountability with that. And then, um, as for the assessments for both, there is, um, an assessment to pre-assess and post-assess in math, and so we will be looking at that. I will be circulating in the classrooms, making sure that this curriculum is fitting the needs of our students. But I will definitely, um, be taking that, the pre- and post-assessments, and putting that date together to come back to the school board and talk about the growth that the students made, and how much growth they made in their staff, so there are assessments. They'll be doing writing samples, we're going to have portfolios of pre- and post, and so we can see the progress that they're making. So, I think that's different than the past.
So, how much of this material will be new to the teachers?
Achieve, they have been working with, Khan, they've been working with, they've been doing some things with Scholastic. Um, V-Math will be new, and they are coming in on that PD day to talk to them about it. Um, another thing that I like about the curriculum is it is really set out for the teachers so that they can see, this is what I start with, then this lesson, then this lesson. But we are bringing them in, and Scholastic in on that day to provide, um, professional development so the teachers feel comfortable with the curriculum.
But not all teachers are using Achieve 3000 in Khan Academy right now. So, do you have a sense, I'm just trying to get a sense, uh, they have one day of professional development, and then summer school starts four days later. So, I'm just trying to figure out how much of this will be flying the plane while reading the manual at the same time?
Yeah, I understand that, that's happened in the past. I feel like when we chose these, we chose materials that were easy to teach, you know, it's not, um, where they're having to dig for different things. We are clearly going to give them the materials, the teacher's guide, all the books they need, all the materials they need, so that they're ready to do that. And if you look through, it lays it out in the Lit Camp, it says first, it's 15 minutes of the opener, and it actually gives them sample questions, then it's 30 minutes of the independent, so it's pretty well dig out for them.
So, will they get the material before June 15th?
We hope to get the material very soon. They can have the math, the one that I showed them. And I do know who the staff is, we get that in our hands.
Question, Mr. Simmons. Are the assessments themselves different? We talked about a different curriculum, a different pre- and post-assessment. Are the assessments themselves different than...
In the past? Yes, yes, these assessments, um, are aligned with this curriculum, and it's different than in the past.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, with that, we will move on to the next agenda. Thank you very much.
Good job, Hill.
Next on the agenda is math first, on update, Ms. Crawford.
Thanks, everyone. Hey, I just wanted to do a quick update on where we are with our math curriculum pilot. Our committee is continuously working, um, on our pilot. Right now, we are in the middle of the Eureka Math Pilot. Uh, this is, I believe, week three, or week two. Um, and we have a couple of new developments with, since rolling out Eureka. First up, all of our teachers K8 have all of the materials that they need in order to be able to teach their Eureka module that they're working on. So, with those materials also came new math manipulatives that our students have been really excited to dig into, and that our teachers are utilizing as well with their module. On May 8th, we will be hosting a parent demonstration night, where we will be working through some lessons and showing some of the materials for both Eureka and Bridges with our parents, and that will be in the evening. And then also, we've made a connection with our first school district to go and visit some of their classrooms that are utilizing Eureka Math right now, so that our teachers can make some connections and see some of the materials in action. And that will be happening afterwards in the middle of May. In addition, our committee members are working back in their buildings to collect the feedback from classroom teachers on how the materials are working. Our focus, and I'm continuously driving this with the committee, that our focus and our, our mission is rigor to the standards, regardless of what material or what curriculum we choose. So, making sure that we end up with the most rigorous program to the Illinois learning standards as possible. Everything else will fall into place, and we will be able to build something once we have, um, a very rigorous program. In addition to that, after Eureka, we will be starting the Bridges Math Pilot, and that will be with the K5 teachers, and that will take us through to May, the middle of May. And on May 26th, we have a half-day with our committee to make our final decision and start to think about next steps of which curriculum we go with, what additional pieces do we need to put in place? Yes.
One good question. So, um, if the scenario, if it ends is we end up having two math curriculum, Bridges, K5, and then the Eureka, how well does Eureka, does Bridges then, um, transfer, oh, how, what's the transition like for the fifth grader, once they go to sixth grade?
Yeah.
Do we do a different...
Yeah, absolutely. That's a really good question, and something that we'll need to consider. Ideally, it would be probably a perfect scenario to have one curriculum that goes K8. We also know that sometimes programs and publishers don't always do everything as well at the lower grades as they do at the upper grades. So, we wanted to, again, make sure that we get the most rigorous program. So, if it means pulling two programs together, that's something that we didn't want to block us from being able to do. Um, some ways of working that out is that perhaps our fifth graders utilize the new program in preparation for going into sixth grade. So, our fifth graders would utilize the same, uh, curriculum as the junior high in order to help bridge them from fifth to sixth grade. The other thing with these two programs is that if we look at the research from the ED report, these two programs were the highest rated in terms of rigor and coherence to the standards. So, there is a lot of commonality, and they are the both programs approach. It would just be a matter of us making sure that we're connecting them the right way. We also recognize that there may be some additional programming that we have to pick up for our Parker Junior High students, in addition to the two programs that we're looking at. So, we definitely don't want to block ourselves from being able to add additional supplements that are helpful, but thinking creatively about the two programs that we have.
Any further comments or questions?
I have one question. Now, just follow me on this.
Okay.
I was listening to the summer school presentation, and then I'm listening to what we're doing, what we're piloting, what we're looking in the future to do. So, how does the V-Math, as being used in the summer school, tie into this?
So, the V-Math Summer Intensive Program is catered specifically for students who are working at that below the 35th percentile level and need that boost. So, it's a specific summer-designed course for a six-week period of time to really be able to pull students up quickly. So, that's why we selected that for summer school. And the company that makes the V-Math materials, they make, their math materials are strictly made those types of programs for students who are struggling and intensive catch-up.
So, they don't really tie in to these programs?
Not, not in terms of the two pilots that we're looking at. We really wanted to, with summer school, be able to do some targeted instruction, that would be able to help us collect data on how we're able to improve learning for students who really, really need, um, some additional foundational skills in a short amount of time.
And those, um, students who are at or above grade level, what will they be using? Does any... Your students, I know in the past, for example, um, students who were cutting to take algebra, for example, in the fall, were invited to come in and take a summer program. So, what will your, what will your 35% and above students be utilizing?
Yes, they will have access to the program around Khan Academy, and there's lots of different layers of that. There's also the SAT and PFAT module, of course, for Khan Academy is available as well. And if I could go back to the V-Math question as well, um, I'm also looking at that program that if we find success with our lower-performing students with V-Math in the summer, I'm monitoring how that goes, so that we possibly can build some of their other products and their other intensive programs into our school year for students who need it. I wish to recharge for someone. Uh, for students who are not on the, uh, the waiver list...
$100.
$100.
That's a lot.
If their waiver list is covered. $60 for the virtual.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have restorative justice. However, uh, we made a motion that we table that until, uh, our next, we will be saving time this evening. This is the first. Second, Secley, will they ever say aye?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have approval of GSU contract. Start the call.
I spoke with, uh, most of the board members about this and updated you a memo previously. The board had approved the contract with GSU earlier this year, and, uh, due to all the transitions that happened in the district, uh, we did not follow through with all the associated activities. Uh, they have come back in a conversation with us about abbreviating that contract to better manage the time that we currently have. Those of us that met with them, uh, believe in the activities that they're bringing, believe in the research that they're talking about, so you saw in the packet, an abbreviated version of what was originally passed. The original, um, I think originally in the, in the budget, we had budgeted about $14,000. The original contract was for about $11,200. Uh, this contract is for $8,000. We would like, uh, to approve this contract.
Any comments, discussion?
When will this board start?
Yesterday, pretty much. Uh, so they've done a couple of things in the district already, uh, from the previous iteration of the contract. Uh, but we have a few big items on here that will be started rather soon. One would be, uh, they could join us in our conversation, uh, using the, the concepts of restorative justice, restorative practices, as a part of our development of our handbook for next year, our discipline code for next year. We had a team meet this year, uh, the handbooks were already done. So, they did a discipline committee this year, we're going to do a discipline committee here in the spring, Focus Elementary, Focus Junior High. We'll use part of their team to help facilitate that, uh, and it really helped us reshape what we're doing in those handbooks, uh, to fit more with the practices we'd like to be, uh, doing here in the district focused on restorative justice. That's one of the pieces. There are two other pieces that are definitely in springtime activities, uh, as far as, uh, community conversations, inviting in, inviting in parents, inviting staff in to learn more about, uh, restorative practices, to have dialogue, uh, based on, uh, diversity linked to these practices. Uh, and then they've got their, uh, the other piece of, uh, research that was, uh, in, in the package, connected to work that we already begun at the beginning of this year. Uh, so, we can get a bunch of this stuff done still in this fiscal year.
So, I, I guess my question, I just want to make sure I fully understand. There was work that was not done.
Correct.
So, were we, were a lot, thinking on something different here? Were we giving any type of corrects, people stopped?
Yep. So, so what they've done is taken that contract, we know that we cannot complete that, they cannot complete that stroke of work done, because we didn't follow through with them at the time. And so, uh, this is an abbreviated version of what that original contract was.
So, I don't remember approving that, or the board. So, we actually approved, I thought we approved the budget somehow, but the actual language that was going to be used in the contract needed to come back to the board for discussion.
I'm looking at a document, um, 1017, uh, minutes from the 1017 Board of Education. Uh, there was a motion, um, uh, to approve the restorative justice contract, GSU in the amount of $11,200 for the 2016/17 square. Contract is repainted to Title I, right? So, if it was approved, it would carry that in.
So, what would be the proper procedure, since we already approved that particular contract? Um, and basically, we are saying it's not valid, or was the proper procedure for...
Yeah.
...approving the contract?
Yep, they, um, they were nice enough to not hold us to this contract, and...
I'm saying, yes, the board was the proper procedure.
To go ahead, uh, so I, I called John Fester just to make sure, uh, that I answered that properly, that, uh, because we had this contract, and we didn't follow through, and then we sat down and had to renegotiate the thing, and renegotiate this whole service, uh, he and I both thought it was proper to bring back here tonight to ask for an approval of this new document, uh, this new contract.
Now, there's a procedure for, that the board makes a vote on a matter already, that's a flagger. You have something for that particular vote to wipe it out, to initiate it, not told by someone's word that we're not going to hold you to that contract. You've already made, taken action. You have to, there is a procedure for approving that action, or checking that action, not just moving forward and approving, you have another contract.
There are a couple of items from that original contract that we received little support of. And so, I, I apologize that I did not clearly answer your question, and I have to run.
So, they can't hold the, uh, that contract specifically, because this is... Well, apparently, what he said is that they've done work under... Well, apparently what he said is that they've done work under that particular contract, and now we're held responsible for financially for that contract, and now we're going to approve to get another contract for another round, which is not just this one.
We will have John here, I believe, around eight-thirty, and so we could just not hold him at the moment, but asking that question.
Okay, so, table this until we confirm this. Do we know when the contract is executed?
This board approved it on ten seventeen.
Do we have an actual executed contract?
We have a contract with their signature on it, not anybody from here. That's what I have.
So, it's actually never been executed?
Well, I asked that question, and John indicated to me it was the board vote that solidified that contract, because I asked him every question, okay, there's no, no one did sign on on it. But we've got in our public minutes that we can approve that contract. But again, I think if we throw that to him, what do you want?
Can we get a copy of that, please?
Of the...
Yeah, I want to see it.
Of which one, I'm sorry?
Of the original contract, the one that has not been executed by anyone here, but on that side, when we have any time.
I can, I can see if I have it. I try and...
Okay. Thank you.
The easy way to do is just to include language in the rose contract, supersede the other contract, point back to them. So, John's going to be here, he's got a lot for us. Okay, if there's no further comments or discussion, we move to our next agenda item, which is discussion of residency registration process. Derek Fox, ten minutes. I'll hand off to Fran to talk us through this presentation.
And so, what we're, what we're going to, in general, talk about here is two things. One is streamlining the registration process for our families to make it a easier process for them. And one way to do that goes to streamline our residency process. We no longer, if we go with the system, we will no longer have people proving residency every year. We won't have a whole of our community proving residency every year. I'll hand off to Fran to talk us through that, and I'm going to grab that other doctor.
So, let's talk about residency. Every year, our current process is that every family comes in and breaks their documents to prove that they reside here in the district. We ask for a property tax bill, their mortgage statements, rental agreement, utility bill, driver license, those kinds of documents. But it's possible to provide those kinds of documents, not actually being provided in the district, many of us have figured that there are ways to do that. It's also heavy manpower with a lot of hours required, there's a lot of time here, there's a lot of people coming in here, up to here, the same day. Who we know that resides here? So, there's a company here, we got to continue them for some of our investigative work this year, and they've been working with a lot of other school districts in the area. And what they do, they're an investigative agency. They're licensed, they're fully insured, and they specialize in residency investigations. And what they have now is a proprietary database system. And what they've done is they've pulled from three credit bureaus, the Department of Motor Vehicles, the Criminals, the Court System, and the Postal Service databases. And they get all this information, and they update their database nightly. And what we do is we give them the names of the parents and guardians and their address, and if they're in the guardian, we will put those into the mix as well. And they'll run that into the database. It'll take about four to five days to complete, and the system will then provide us two lists, a green list, people who clearly reside in the foster home. At that point in time, we'll be able to send those people through to the next step of the residency registration process. And then there's the red list, where we're questioning whether they actually reside in the district families. We'll send out the letters to the green list families and allow them to start the registration process. They'll be able to get online and do all the things that they've been able to do before. So, they no longer have to write all their documents here. They're done. We're going to keep the district open to pay fees if they want to come in and pay fees this way, but other than that, they can pay their fees online through Skyward, they can do all their other online through Skyward, and then they just show that they, information pickup day, the buildings, but they no longer have to come here. Our red listed families, first thing we're going to do is we'll take that list, and we're going to review them from friends, and we'll remove those from the list, and we'll deal with those separately. Then we're going to take a closer look at the families who are remaining, and National will actually go and knock on doors where we think they reside, not the district address here, but where we think they reside. And we're going to try and determine if that's where they are. Things that we were concerned about at first, people, for example, who had just sold their houses, my understanding is those documents, that's why it was likely the base of the database are key, because apparently keys are being filed really very quickly, like within hours they're filed. So, people, you know, those are some of the questions that we have for them. So, if a family is found, though, to be living outside, National is going to give them a letter that says, you've been found to not, no longer view residing in the boundaries of District 1161, and there's information to withdraw your student at the end of the school year. Remember, we're going to do this information right now in April. They're going to run that database, and they're going to start knocking on doors now while this school year is still in effect. Once you get into summer, you start in with summer situations where, you know, parents are working, kids need to be with grandma, and, you know, those kinds of things. So, they're going to be doing it right now through the school year. If the family chooses to contest the residency verification, they'll be given a meeting date of time to come here to the district office, and National is actually going to conduct those meetings with the parent. We'll be able to give them some of the evidence that they have that says we don't believe you there. If at that time, the family still doesn't want to withdraw, then they can request a hearing, and National will give the, you know, the information that we have, and you will, they'll be allowed a regular presence during that. Our new students, the kindergarters, we've already done our pre-registration last week, so those names will just get thrown into the database like the resident existing students. For new students who come to us during the course of the summer, what we will do is a preregistration form, we will reveal, review information, and then we'll send that to National, and if they will, they'll run it through the database. They're saying you should take about the next day, we should give them to get that information back. If their residency is confirmed, registration will continue as it always does, they'll just have to be filling out all the ready forms. If it is not confirmed, we will deny until they approve otherwise. Again, National will then go and knock on the door where we think they actually reside as opposed to the foster home. Over the summer, the summer, we will take that pre-registration in June and July, and then once that pre-registration is confirmed, once that residency is confirmed, then we'll set appointment times for them to come here and bring new students, and meet in the buildings, and get their children to the proper buildings, and then get them completely enrolled. But again, they'll be given residency checks, so it'll be done this by the end. During the school year, it will take them about forty-eight hours to enroll students, so a parent comes to us, we'll get all the information, we'll run it, and once we get a green light, then we'll call the parent, have them come back and complete the registration. So, it'll take about forty-eight hours to register them. Also, then, what National will do is every quarter, since they already have our database, then we'll rerun through their system to see if anything has changed. If things have changed throughout the school year, then we'll contact the families again, say, if our understanding that you will be considering for the end of the school year, just know that next school year, you'll actually go to work and find the site. We'll do that on a quarterly basis, and again, any residency kids will hopefully let them in.
Questions?
If, if in the course of, say, running now, we run it the next quarter, remember, if they start the school year here, they get to finish the school year here. That's all. So, they'll be given information that following school year, they'll have to do whatever they need. So, if day one, if day one, they live here in the foster home, they get to complete this school year.
Day one, if we lose, we discover it on one of the quarterly updates.
I guess it depends on the information that we have. We now have information that says you actually did not reside here first day, and I would actually go there.
Which is consistent with...
Which is consistent with what we...
So, was the benefit of doing it in April, that leases end at the end of the school year, and people start moving around, and we are repaying them to redo it by the beginning of the school?
They'll, I have to ask them when their next run would be, because we're going to get caught in that summer piece anyway. What they're saying is their experience has said, most people are staying put. So, ones that we're not sure, those, you know, mortgage statements, or the rentals and the lease bills, that can be more tricky. And those, they feel like after, especially after the first year, they need a lot of those out, and we don't have any investigation going to do here.
So, what's the benefit of doing it in April?
Because the summertime, you know, too many people who do not, even their family home, where their kids are staying someplace else during the course of the school year, because their parents get up early and work, so they're having to stay elsewhere or at home.
No, I'm saying, if they're running the database, you said you're going to send the list of parents, of people who are obviously in the district, and they were in the district state this year, and you're sending that list now in April, they're a drudg, even if they're away for the summer, or the kid is away for the summer, they're a drudg, and all of the database that they're running through is not changing. Now, if...
Verification matters.
No, I'm not saying I have verification, I'm talking about the purpose, what's the benefit of doing it in April when the leases are up until June? The people who are, who are transient in this district are, they keep their lease until the end of the school, the school year.
Leases, I've seen, don't, they're not, there's not a percentage of them in June, to be honest, and I've seen a lot of them. There are every month that they're here.
Saying month-to-month, so it's there?
There's some of the month, there's a lot of the guys tired, a lot of the old ones tired, August, we're getting them every month. I couldn't say that we have so many of them that are too cheap.
So, the benefit of doing it in April again is what?
That we're going to get people right now that usually really reside aren't here, that you don't, again, maybe we could run it during the summer, but their concern is when they start doing door knocks, there's too many other reasons why a child may not be laying their head in their foster home address during the summer than their injuries were here.
I understand what you're saying. The same thing with regards to, they have the green list versus the red list, and they have these red list people, they come in there and not going to knock on the doors in the summer because its kids might be away. So, they can do that next step after they run the list. I just want to know why we're doing it in April in the middle of the school year. Are they going to charge us to update the list when school starts or at the beginning of the school?
No. This, what this does, once we have the kids in, unless we're investigating, it's two dollars per family. Done. Every quarterly upgrade, you know, every time they rerun it, it's going to be only two dollars. So, we're going to get them, we're going to run the database now, and then we'll run it again in the first quarter, I would imagine, when we do it again this year. But it's one cost for the family, so long as they stay on the green list. If they go to the red list and they have to do actual investigations, then we pay the forty dollars an hour, which is what we're paying right now for investigations.
What's the margin of error on this?
You know, that's going to be anecdotal. I spoke with several business officials who've been using them, and it's pretty accurate and pretty good, very easy.
Can you talk to any other school districts that are using it?
Yeah. That's something, and that's the only business official, like, in nine, they went to DA, three was also going to DA six, and then they don't want to create, they've been using it for a while now.
And how, so, the three agencies or the three bureaus that are used, I think I saw Department of Motor Vehicle...
They use Department of Motor Vehicle, they use the three credit bureaus, they use the court systems, the civil and criminal court system.
So, this is a more invasive process than what we currently use? So, parents have to give, because you can't run a credit?
We're not running a credit.
But can you check, can you check, can you do a check of personal data with the three bureaus without...
Well, you're not going to the bureaus.
Okay.
The bureaus are providing National with various specific data, and it's not their financial data. It's specifically for where bills are going. It's, basically, it's address information.
So, the only thing we have to provide this agency is name and address of a family, that's it. And that's more accurate than families actually having to come in, because then that eliminates families having to bring in mortgage, having to bring in lease.
Exactly.
And so, but with your research, you're saying that the margin of error is actually pretty low?
That's the anecdotal information.
I love the fact that we're saving paper, copying, you know, and I see, if I remember looking at this, I think it was fifteen, was it fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, here, I'll say on. So, we will put information on the website, and it's going to be similar to this is what Lansing 158 puts up, and it tells you that we're contracted with National Investigations, and the, you know, tells what the procedure is, and just, this is what we will be doing. So, we will put something similar to this up on our website. The initial cost is two dollars, so that's about thirty-six hundred dollars. Any of those families, forty dollars per hour, and they're saying on average, probably takes them about an hour and a half to investigate those. The first year, they expect that they're going to have to test almost ten percent of our enrollment, so about another ten thousand eight hundred, and then those quarterly checks aren't included in that original thirty-six hundred. The new students are the only ones that that will be paying for at two dollars a chance. Last year, we did, we paid people just over fifteen thousand dollars. So, it was close last.
And I, I think that is the argument to come to. Do we have, do you have the data handy as to over how many days it's just done, how much staff is used with this, and where we can actually give it up through numbers of having to be sent out for families to be investigated?
I can get you how many families are going to be investigated this year, and so far, I think the people leave are open almost every day during the summer, and doing residency checks on the schedule that we did last year. And this was, that fifteen thousand was all manpower, all of the employees. That was including copying all that? No, that's just hours.
I remember one mirror on this, our families of our district, well, I mean, families of our district, or the majority of our families, who no longer have to go through this onerous word and saying.
No longer come here, do a task here, for the day where they live every year.
I think that's huge, and I think we will make very many people happy that they are, we're not only benefiting the people who are doing the right thing, but we also have a much higher percentage chance of catching people who aren't, and also sending a very strong message to people to not even try. It's just not, the amount of time effort that people put in to mini-filling the system. It's just not, the amount of time and effort that people put in to manipulating the system is amazing. I think this is absolutely.
That is the story that I'm getting from the districts. It's the first year, it's a lot of time and effort. And this is the year of the last, third year, it's a chance.
It's, it's clean, it's simple, it's factual and everybody is subjected to the exact same process.
So national, do they have our entire database now? No. No, we'll be happy to give them more of it for students. All we're going to give them is they're going to give, it's an Excel template. They just ask for the parent's name, the student's name and their address. That's it.
And it's checking to see where bills are.
Yeah.
So that's more accurate than a mortgage.
It's the same for a mortgage statement, you're putting the name there, but the thing is like your mortgage statement could go. I own two homes. I grew up in Seattle, I don't want. Because I have bills that I wrote on the books. Property tax bills, mortgage statements. It's, it's pretty easy to do, yet I do not reside in my home. I agree that I could prove this, but what, what we request, I can easily prove this.
And one is your primary residence, will be others?
Oh, yes. Again, I haven't sold yet.
But based on your example, that can still very well be, still be.
It could, but when they start making preponderance of where the real, you know, all of your bills are going. It's not just your mortgage statement. It's where your health insurance bill is going, where's your picture, you know, those things that show up. When they have court documents that say you bought this house after the back and all of a sudden, all the bills are going, you know, the majority of them are going there. It's going to make a, you know, a case that says it's there. And then there's not question as to whether, you know, you live in one or the other. That's when you end up on a red list and they may knock on the door in the house that they, that is outside of the district.
And they're able to check your person's bills per coin. I have a ton of credit card bills, not like making it up. Coming up with social security numbers and getting into more basic information.
Again, what the information we're getting is that the credit bureaus are simply giving them access. They're not giving any financial information.
Are there any further comments or questions? With that, thank you, Ms. Mavella.
And just one other thing, we will be looking at doing that the last two weeks. Red list investigations in May. We'll put up the registration in May. Again, we're taking students in June, July. And register in August. And all of those students that, that, to find out, it's happening usually.
Thank you very much. Okay, next agenda item is approval of national investigation contracts. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with National Investigations, Inc. as presented. Mrs. Marcus is first. Second, Mr. Simmons. Will you roll call Mrs. Prendergast?
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Oda?
No.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
No.
Correia?
I would suggest we're going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to bring this, bring this back to later date since we're, it's going to be in the past. So.
I think that's the majority again, but.
It fails right now.
Yeah.
And then some people want to bring it again.
Okay. Okay, next in the agenda, we have approval of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school fees. Second.
So we are looking at, we're still not by the highest, but it seems like districts are lower than every. So we haven't actually changed that fee since that really aired, but somehow or other we ended up being higher than a lot of the districts. At this point, we are, I was in power, and the increase from the point where we're starting, it is a little steady. We're changing the, the, we're making it just construction fees, but it includes the technology fees. And the Texas system, our, our Texas, our, to digital. We're just on restructuring, which does seem to be the trend. I don't think it's just on construction fees, but it's not a per se anymore. The other piece is that this is going to come up a little later. The, the revised policy four one four zero. What we're looking at is when we have students who did not qualify for a wave of fees, but then do later on and they have a cumulative fee. The practice has been to waive the current year, but nothing prior. We reached out to the state board to find out what their fee of the law is. Should we be waiving that current year or everything prior? I didn't really have a, a good answer. It's, it's not that clear in the law or in banks. What they said was we definitely have a way to this year's fee. But that we couldn't discriminate with anything that we did to students or any prior fees that were still out there. The only thing that we really have that's not regular are the grants fees, the dance and trip and so on. However, history has been that if students have those fees, that they are not allowed to participate in the. Four one four zero will allow you to, a person, if they're qualified to waive the, waive that year and all prior. There are several graders right now who waive this year's fees, but there are cases from prior years that are coming out there. So four one four zero would, would waive everything prior. Except for lost textbooks, damage to equipment, those kinds of, of fees, but that's how that, that changes. Right now, we do have one hundred and sixty-five eighth grade students who have fee balances. They were in January, were from five dollars to almost fifteen hundred. So you will be encountering this, this situation with our eighth graders. Right now, they're getting ready during our graduation. So, and other than that, we are, if we can, we'll have fees. The lunch fees, we will reach you, the food service is up for bid right now. As soon as we get kids back, we'll then come with a lunch price. I'll partner with some stuff back.
So the dance and the eighth grade trip are the only two activities that these hundred and sixty-five students would not be able to participate. They didn't participate in graduation.
I understand that you're not, you can't afford a graduation.
Couldn't prevent their parents from getting tickets.
That's true.
I would actually support that. If their fees haven't been waived, if it is just, just regarding payment of bills, I would support parents not being able to take it. The child would absolutely love a graduation, it never takes something away from a child that you can't give back to them. But parents, the child should be punished, but I can't support allowing for parents who owe us money to get tickets to graduation.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, out of the hundred and sixty-five students that have the fees that are still due, how many of those would qualify for the waiver?
I don't have a specific number. I do know that when I went down the list, it started looking at them, there were quite a few of that for current year waves. I don't have a hundred, but a lot of them are small ones. That's pretty easy to be given. There's a few of them out there that are between a hundred and a hundred.
So they don't have a total amount then of how much we would be waiving, we would be silent off on if we waived those people?
Do we have a, would it just?
I would say part of the day of the staff.
How many eighth graders doing that?
About three hundred.
Three hundred.
They show half of our students. So in the last year, wasn't there something new that you did in terms of trying to get parents to allow the waiver early instead of later?
Yeah, and, and again, a lot of, we caught a lot of those victims that it was for current year. Some of these students have been having these accumulations, you know. Second, third, fourth grade, not always every single year, sometimes every other year. Is that accumulation that's.
Yeah. So the, we, we've had the.
It feels like we're combining a couple of agenda items here.
We are.
We're going to do one at a time.
Yeah, so in the memo, we, we put both of these together. Really though, we're going to ask you for first the motion to approve the, the fees. That would be the first one. The second one, then, in a couple other agenda items down the road here, we'd ask you to approve the, to talk through the language on this first one. This, this, this would be a first reading of this policy. But the first one would be to approve fees. So if you want to do that, then we'll come right back to the conversation of that policy and a couple, after a couple other agenda items.
And just the clarification fees are just staying the same?
Staying flat, yes.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion then to approve the proposed school fees for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Sodam, second is Huckabee. Mrs. Prendergast, will you roll call?
Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Correia?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of psychologist intern.
So there are, so there's that one and then Tarkman High Special Ed Staff will be the one after this. Robin has presented on both of these in the past to talk about the, the upcoming need that we would have and it was the right time to, to get these on our calendar. This is, our current psychologist came out of the same program, us hiring, bringing her on as an intern. Ultimately, we were, we were able to get her on full time. And what we're doing is, is asking to be able to add a certified psychologist intern. We get a reimbursement for nine thousand dollars. That psych interns typically do get some kind of pay. So we'd be looking to do the nine thousand, but Robin is indicating that she would like to go up to twelve thousand because she knows she can attract some candidates by just adding that a little bit more. Fran and I talked about that in the budget and Robin does have that ability to put that into her, into her special ed budget. So, so this would be asking for the approval of a one point oh psych intern to be paid as much as twelve thousand dollars for next year.
Okay, so I'm putting that in my motion. Yes, up to, up to twelve thousand?
Yes.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year?
Yes. And this is a hard to fill position for us and so it's a great opportunity to grow our own.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve adding a one point oh FTE certified school psychologist intern to be paid up to twelve thousand dollars for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Any discussion? Will you roll call Mrs. Prendergast? I'm sorry. As I said, I'll entertain a motion to approve adding one point oh FTE certified school psychologist intern to be paid up to twelve thousand dollars for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. Second, Mrs. Huckabee? Will you roll call Mrs. Prendergast?
Okay. Simmons?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Correia?
Yes.
Next in the agenda, we have Parker Junior High Special Education Staff for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
And again, Robin has presented on this as part of talking about needs in special education across the district. These needs, she has previously presented, are based on increased student numbers, students who have special needs at the junior high school. And so we are asking for approval to add two point oh certified LBS one educators and a point four speech language pathologist. That would take the current speech language pathologist and make that person a one point oh position, so a part-time position at the moment.
Okay, I will call for a motion to approve adding two point oh FTE certified LBS one educators and point, zero point four FTE speech language pathologist to Parker Junior High School. Mrs. Huckabee is first.
I will second. Any discussion?
So can you, for, can you provide us a little more information? So what are the projections for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
She provided those at a previous meeting and I don't have those on me. Does somebody else have, can you have the, have the numbers easily accessible? Somebody from Junior High have those as far as what the increased number is?
So those projections are already.
She presented those here.
And the increase of two FTE would then bring, what will the, what will the, I mean, I wanted to know what the numbers would then look like based on the projection. In that report, I did not get clarity on what, what Parker really is looking like. I didn't know what the ratio was. So with the projections and the adds of two additional FTE, I'd like to have a little bit more information about what does that now look like?
Yep. And if, if my board looks, come on here, then I won't agree a moment, but I know she indicated two different things when she spoke to us last. It would change the case modes and bring them to a reasonable number and that it would also allow for more team teaching to go on. But this thing is not, I've seen it a lot. Kathy, do you have access to that? Do you believe the minutes were left?
What was the meeting?
March thirteenth.
Or, actually, I think it was the February count. It's in the thirteenth agenda.
We can access a previous board meeting and we can look at all the assessments that are on there. I don't know if we did the twelve.
It is in the February twenty seventh meeting. And so we'll see, she has.
February thirteenth, we approved. Simmons, twenty seven.
So the document that I'm pulling up right now doesn't, the one that I've seen, those we have it gives total numbers for the district, but not Parker specifically. And so I can't, I can't find them either.
I mean, are these from meetings? Shouldn't they make an informal decision? That information would be helpful. The rest of the board may not feel like they need that, but I just feel like Parker is still a mystery in terms of what special ed situation versus areas look like. And so if adding two FTEs is a fix, it would be helpful to know what we're actually fixing. Is this improving the ratio?
It is, and I apologize for not having that. I'm trying to pull the minutes to see this.
Can I ask a question? Ms. Howard, of the, your concern is the student to staff ratio in the special ed department?
My concern is making sure a thorough enough assessment has been done of what. My concern is making sure a thorough enough assessment has been done of what the special ed needs are at Parker. I know in the presentation, when I asked what does the ratio currently look like in terms of 730 in terms of the number of students or that, that question didn't have an answer. So I, I just want to know that, and I'm not debating whether or not we need two FTE. I just want more information to know. So what does this now fix? What does this scenario look like going into next year if we're adding two more FTE? The projections have been done, then there must be some sense of how many students we're going to have, what the split's going to look like.
I remember what she did in the presentation out of the paper earlier. We did not have the current, you know, the current information. It was projected future. How do we even know what a future is if we don't have current?
I think she left the number for the entire district.
But not all current information, so I think we should table this. I need to withdraw my motion, I will, but we need to table this until we have further information.
For next year, yes. And you know, we can, we can do this at our best. We can get it in the meeting.
Or can you separate the two? I mean, I think the adds for the current speech-language, speech-language pathologist to bring them first up to one FTE, so that's, that's easier.
Well, can we approve the one of two FTEs? Can we always peel that back? And if we approve it, it doesn't mean we have to fill it, right?
Well, why not just separate it?
Correct. But we can separate it, that's fine, but...
I was saying, this might be easier.
But if we posted as anticipated, we...
Right. And, and just as we had posted some anticipated, we posted the anticipated mandatory position, for example. Not committing that we were going to do it until we knew exactly what that, what was going to happen with that. We just needed to know, is there a candidate pool? We have currently posted anticipated elementary positions.
Okay.
Without, you know, we haven't asked for any additional positions in those areas, but we posted anticipated spots. We could do that and not lose out on opportunities on the candidate pool.
Okay, and then come back in two weeks and re-examine this.
Yes.
However, once we, once we approve these two additional staff members, then it doesn't come back to the board for approval for hiring them. And if it's not a good number, if we don't have good information, then we just authorize hiring staff that we need.
Right, right.
And it is just sitting out there.
So we are not, we're going to, I'm asking that we move this to the next meeting for approval.
Yep.
I'm going to post though, anticipated positions. We are not going to hire them until we were to get approval for, for this. We may have other special ed teachers that leave us, and so we're developing a candidate pool that can fill spots.
Okay. Is everybody fine with that?
No.
Okay. So with that, okay, so then generally, people are okay with the 0.4 FTE-speech-language pathologist for Parker?
Yes.
So then, I will entertain a motion to approve adding 0.4 FTE-speech-language pathologist to Parker Junior High School.
I'll move.
Second, Mrs. Sotomayor. Another discussion? You roll call Ms. Prino?
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, with the second reading, and approval of revised policy 7-100.
And this policy, if you remember, simply moved our exclusion date. That is all this one did. It brought the exclusion date up a little bit. I want to say it was October 15th. Somebody can nod and tell me that I'm right. We moved it to October 1st. That was to align better with personnel that we had in the district that they conflicted with having a lot of staff out during, out of our ed. So all we did was move that date up further. At the time when we first talked about this, we mentioned that part of the ALE team this, this summer, the nurses that we'll have in place, we're going to be working throughout the summer on making sure that folks have their, have all their immunizations and physicals in, so that we minimize the number of people moving closer to the exclusion date. And hopefully, nobody excluded.
The attachment on, on my computer was not redlined, so it was not apparent what the changes were going on.
Yeah. And, and so the only change is the October 15th to October 1st. Yes, and I see the same thing happening on the next policy also, at least in my version too.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion for second reading and approval of revised policy 7-100 as presented.
I will.
Mrs. Sotomayor is first.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Huckabee. Any further discussion or comments? Mr. Simmons?
The references, the Kedden-Ganu Act here with the homeless child being automatically granted without necessarily approval. Is there a grace period under which such a student would fall to get the required medical documents?
And Robin's my expert on it, but John is here, so I'm going to see if he's got an answer for us.
I'm not aware of one under the Kedden-Ganu Act. Generally, homeless students cannot be required to show the general proofs that other students can show. The idea would be that the school would work diligently to get the homeless student access to community care or other care where they could get the immunizations as soon as possible.
So it sounds like it's a district-by-district basis?
Correct. Student by student, student by student, yeah.
But I would request that in the proposed homeless agenda, either the subsequent meeting, that we talk about how, what our process currently is for the immunization medical documentation as... Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Okay, can we roll call Ms. Prino?
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have, again, first reading of policy 4-140.
And so this is the one we were just talking about a few moments ago, as part of, connected to fees. And the red line did not show up on the copy, so if I can direct your attention to the second paragraph, down towards the bottom of that second paragraph. The addition is, "Once a family is found to be eligible for a fee waiver, all past fees will be waived." And then there's an except. Except that students receiving a fee waiver are not exempt from charges for lost and damaged books, lost materials, supplies, and equipment. That statement currently is in the policy. We connected the new sentence to that. So the new sentence deals with, "Once a family is found to be eligible, all past fees will be waived, except for those mentioned in the policy." The second addition then comes right after that. It's the final sentence of that paragraph. "Eight graders with any unpaid fees will not be allowed to participate in non-curricular graduation activities." And our thinking there was, we need, for some students, some families, we need that stick out there. So we try and do everything with carrots, but it doesn't always work. We will not recommend a practice that may have happened here in the past, and that was a threat to hold diplomas. We're not in that business. We're not holding graduation. But these are activities that would, that families would pay for. Our logic here is that if they would pay to go to Great America, we'd like them to pay their fees off first before they would be eligible to go to Great America, or to whatever that other activity is. And so I oppose these two changes to the policy as, as part of this first reading, knowing that we already started dialogue around it. We don't want to impact the, the academic activities for eighth graders. We value graduation, we value that they get that diploma, but we have to have some way to continue to engage in that conversation about trying to collect some of these fees that are outstanding.
Is there not some language in the state or the commission, policy on this? If I had pulled it up. It's not, well, the diploma part, you know, if you give that, but trips and things of that, they can come up, and it's not curricular and, not curricular, but filled with traditional. Isn't there some language that the fees can be waived for those things under, under this policy?
I believe in our policy, based on, you know, what we, we get from precedent, it indicates curriculum trips that we...
Is it our policy, you're talking about the Illinois State, is that what you're talking about?
Right. We, we use the press recommendation, so from the, from the School Board Association, and which is typically based on, as what statutes change, you know, they, they make sure that we're aligned to those. I am unaware of any overriding state policy that, that says that.
Okay. I'm sorry, if I can, this is just from my limited expertise. It's, it really, it's kind of like, you know, kids have a right to education. They don't have an automatic right to do after-school activities that are not part of the curriculum. So, so the rules don't exactly apply. And the idea is that someone should not be penalized, or they should not be deprived of their education. Anything extra beyond that, you know, is really up to the school district. So, you know, going to Great America, you probably would have a, maybe a distance class, you'd probably have a hard time justifying how that's a curricular activity, even though it's team building, and there's lots of great emotional things that go into a class trip. So things of that nature, you know, like board improvements, you know, things like that, I think we did that a few years ago. So that would be, something that would be strictly beyond curriculum, that would be a school-related activity.
Part of what the, what is covered in fees, and part of this language I'm moving at, and not to relate with this, I just want to make sure that we understand the whole what we're doing, and we're not discriminating against families that cannot pay a permit. But what I'm reading here is saying, unless this has been amended, charges for field trips made during school hours or late after-school hours, if the field trip is a required or customary part of the class or extra curricular activity, example given, they talk about the annual schedule, museum concerts, all of that other stuff, or field trips, you know, maybe getting into, maybe into study, that this is part of what's talked. So when we talk about a graduation fee or assessing that, we're taking that part into consideration. I think I'm just a little bothered, I was even bothered a little bit earlier about, you know, this whole thing, or telling a child, "You can go to graduation because your mother didn't pay your fees for this school year." We don't know what the circumstances are in these households are. And it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to get into any more than that, but I just have a little bit of a problem with this. And I think we're about kids, and we're about all kids, and no child left behind, and getting involved in that. We're starting to...
And that is why this is a first reading, and that the memo is here to, to have this dialogue.
And I just, we're, we're in the state of saying a child would be able to go to graduation if they missed that.
I didn't say anything about a child missing graduation. I was just reading from the Illinois State Department of Education, part of what, what they don't do, and just making sure that we're aligned to that. I'm just telling you that I'm having an issue.
With what part of our policy?
With this reading here, and what, and what Fran talked about earlier. We have 165 eighth graders who have, and that's more than half, we have 300, that cannot participate in some form of eighth-grade activity.
Just the, just the non-curricular, the boat trip, that used to be boat trip, that was Days and Busters. So it would be that trip that students pay their fees for.
I don't really, I don't really care what it is, it's just... It's a message, it's a message, it's a message that we're sending. And I don't like the discrimination part of it. Because you can't pay your fees. Sometimes I think we need to think about if you, or I, or somebody else was sitting in those seats. But we really want that done to our children, and we're about all children. This, this is, you know, that's just my...
No, I just want my child to attend something that I couldn't afford to pay for that was outside of the parameters of those education, those public school provides.
Yeah, I know.
I'd like to see, I would suggest that that last, I can't fill up again, I lost it on my computer, the last sentence, Dr. Pop, it just says, "Eighth graders who haven't paid their fees." I feel that sentence might be better, it was tighter, "And who aren't subject to the fee waiver." Because those students who are subject to the fee waiver, we say above.
Correct.
They, they are exempt from that. But I'd like, just to be clear, that it's only students who, by definition, have the ability to pay those fees, and for whatever reason, their parents have chosen not to pay those fees, those students, until those fees are paid, will not be able to participate in that. I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, that wasn't what I was looking for, though. It's a, oh, God, this is boring. It's an, an extra, optional, optional activity. And I would also like to see that those students, I'm still liking for the inclusion of denying parents to graduation fees if they've chosen not to pay fees that they already pay.
Not to belabor the issue, and I respect your opinion on this, but I would say that I would not be for that because it does impact the kid when their parents, or their grandparents, whoever, cannot be there to witness them ever graduating.
These parents can come to the school and say they can't pay, and show them that they can't pay, and then we waive that. But that's not the case. These are, these are, by definition, families who are willfully not paying what they owe. How do we know that? Well, because the students who meet the free reduced lunch requirements don't have to pay, we waive them. So out of the number that, Dr., that is the baladados, that we don't have that broken down by how many students qualify for free reduced lunch, and how many don't. Those who do qualify, we'd be waived, that's our policy. But again, we set a bad precedent if we just start to say, "You don't have to pay," and we just let you have to do all those things anyway.
I think what we could do to...
Then we're relying on the moral code of people to just pay those fees.
I think what we could do to simplify things is focus on the policy and then have a separate identification of what would be an optional and what would be a curricular activity, and then we could have some better definitions. I think that once we have more moving parts in this...
I think it's pretty clear and plausible.
Yeah, I agree. Just mean like in terms of identifying, you know, okay, well, does that mean that our parents buy tickets to graduate?
They're given four tickets.
Right, sorry.
They're given four tickets.
Given four tickets.
And I think they should be given four tickets. They're in good standing with schools.
Mr. Simmons?
Wow. I'm sorry.
I got a loss when Fran was talking about the waiving of all prior fees. Where did that come from?
So that is a recommendation we're making, based on this, exactly what Merle was talking about, that we have families, and this is from my experience working with, working with residency in another district, working with, helping families to go ahead and verify their status to get them free or reduced lunch, that oftentimes, families will put off that step for a long time. They try to push that up as long as possible because they don't want to come forward and say, "We, we have this need." And so we know, just through experience with talking to families, that they would have, they would have qualified quite a while ago if they had come forward. You know, when we hear the story, it's, so, you know, mom or dad lost a job this, this amount of time ago, and they're just scraping by. Well, now they've accumulated a fee.
I know.
Yeah, that's why we pose the language this way, to say we'd like to go back.
The language makes it feel like it's an automatic thing, which I don't think that we should govern that way. I think it should be up to the superintendent or the appropriate person to present that on a case-by-case basis, because it probably does apply in a fair amount. It may not apply in other cases. So to put a blanket on it, doesn't... So to put a blanket on it, doesn't really make sense. Let's do it a case-by-case basis. That would be my suggestion for how to alter that language. Right now, it reads to me as if it's an automatic thing, when in fact, there may be occasions where people lose jobs, and they have to apply for it, it has nothing to do with the prior six years of walking out on their fees. More example, that's one of a thousand examples of what might impact the family.
Does anyone else have an issue with that? Does that seem fair? I mean, I agree.
You know, it's for our staff to handle, and just kind of come to us with a summary or something like that. It's not just a pose of language.
Has this one sixty-five number increased, or over from here, or about, has it, have you seen, what's the trend? And then the second question is, does dangling the carrot actually...
It's larger than it's been. I, I'm concerned with the case-by-case, just because I'm not sure what criteria I would use. I, I understand the perspective, I truly do, I just don't know what data I can...
You guys have anecdotal experience or knowledge that backs the recommendation. But I can pick up eighteen other anecdotes that prove that the opposite case. If you're, if you're going to move from the existing policy, I need more than anecdotes. I, I need quantifiable proof, else, I'm willing to leave open the possibility, but come make the case to me.
I don't know how I would get a new card group that people would have qualified in the past.
Then, then let's just deal with the case when they do apply, pride aside, pride affects people, which is kind of the example we're using in different ways, I, I can't kind of be the arbiter of that. It's, we can deal when they apply and judge it at that point in time, and it's nice and legal.
And just for that part, you can...
Sure. And one of the pieces of the policy indicates already that the superintendent can give additional consideration for illness of the family, unusual expenses such as fire, floods, storm damage, et cetera, seasonal unemployment, emergency situations, when one or more of the parents or guardians are involved in work stops. So it already gives some latitude in there to make decisions, and so tie those things to this.
Or whatever, but to go cycle back in time, then we start getting the judgment about the past, and really, none of us may have the right information or the necessary contact, so let's say they get into their game, let's just deal with the present time, when they make the application. That's my suggestion. Said differently, I can't support the policy that gives blanket immunity, that type of application or all past transgressions, doesn't make sense, I don't think that's a point.
So we have to go, and you're bringing this back.
With another, another reading, yes, if we need to do a third one. And so I'm trying to capture what you were saying. So at one point, we talked about eighth graders who do not have fee waivers, was one of the changes we wrote in, and who have unpaid fees. We talked about, in this case, it would be current fees waived once they are approved. And then, am I hearing correctly, that, that with permission of the superintendent, or does it need consideration, can we do the past fees? Am I, I'm trying to follow that goal.
I don't believe these should go backwards. Is this trying to forgive past transgressions? That's not the right term.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
What we should collect on?
We, pardon me?
Collect on? Don't forgive, we want to forgive, but we need to collect.
It appears as though we encourage and facilitate the ability to apply for the waiver, and it's up to the person, the family, to apply. And what, what way to prevent them from doing it, we're guessing, it could be pride, it could be other factors, just don't know.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's our job to try to figure that out. All we can do is facilitate the means by which they can apply for the waiver, at the point that they feel they qualify, or they're in trouble. And we should give every consideration to those families that do apply, and I think we do. But then to kind of go back in time, and try to figure out, we'll just give them forgiveness all the way back in time, that feels like we're way overstepping.
Well, it sounds like the present policy that we have already provides more of the ability for the superintendent staff to go back and, based on the family circumstances, that have discretion to do that.
It doesn't indicate, it, it seems to be speaking to a fee waiver right now. There is really no language at this point that says backwards. And so that's why then we have folks that are accumulating, accumulating this that we might be up, you know, in this situation, we've got to see a grade or not.
Well, I would, I would recommend that you add in the discretion for if you apply for years. Discretion to review prior years.
If a prior one's... Well, if families applying to have the fees waived in the prior year, they can prove that they were, would have qualified for free reduced lunch, but didn't fill up the payment. I think that...
Is our policy, at the end of the year, to tell people that they... How many touch points do we have to remind people that if they, that they can qualify? No, we do at the beginning of your reading, all that paperwork is in there, and you can roll. Do they get reminded about that, if they're ready to do? Do they send out reminders, and we didn't, that, but are, is that a reminder that people are qualified? I don't want to make... But at least one more, at least, at least twice during the course of a, of a year. And then actually, three times, because they see it again when the enrollment papers come out in April, now. So three times you get reminded to apply for a fee waiver. Make sure we put a waiver, it's, it's part of the, part of what we put a waiver, everyone. Right, I remember seeing all that, and I remember there. Yeah, I think, I think they're responsible. Holding themselves from asking for a fee waiver, it's there, we can't, we aren't extinguing with it.
I just think the point of this being this is we're punishing kids.
We're not punishing kids at all.
Yeah.
But how are we punishing kids? It's not, but how specific, I don't know, how are we punishing?
I'm not, I'm not going to continue, I'm going to tell you to move on, because we have a lot to do.
I'm going to make a suggestion, if individuals or members would like to carry into discussion outside that we find.
No more discussions happening.
Okay, but...
If this side doesn't want to answer the question, that's, that's fine.
That's fine.
This is something made a very clear earlier, when she...
Okay, then I'm going to make a suggestion, then we move on. Thank you, everybody, for your contributions, I certainly appreciate it. At this time, I would like to bring back the item deft that we're going to ask Mr. Bester about, in terms of DSE contract. So we had talked about, can you come on up? Mr. Bester, when, when you and I spoke about Governor State University approved the contract back on ten seventeen, that contract was for about eleven thousand, two hundred dollars, I think that's the number. We did not follow through with all the activities in that contract. And so then they have come back to us with a modified contract, which we brought to the table tonight. Our question, though, is, do we need, is it not just about approving this contract, but do we need to reclose the loop on the prior contract?
There was no signatures.
Do we need to do something to...
Is there anything in the new contract that says this contract supersedes all prior agreements, understandings, what have you?
It does not, but we certainly could go back and ask them to...
That would be standard language, that you would typically put in a contract, when you're dealing with the same subject matter as a prior contract, so that you're clear that the new contract supersedes and voids the old contract, and that this is the only contract that covers this subject matter.
And you did mention, so that nobody on the side signed?
Yeah, what, I'm sorry.
That nobody signed on the side?
Typically, it, that was brought up to me.
It was in the minutes.
The legal action that the board takes is the vote to approve the contract. The court's hold that actually signing it is more what they call a ministerial act, so the legal act is voting to approve it. Once you vote, approve it, you have a contract. Putting someone's signature on it is a very good and best practice, that I would strongly recommend in the future, for all of our contracts. The re-election of voting to approve it was fine.
The other, the, the final thing is that there have been services rendered, apparently, under the previous contract. So if we void out that...
By Governor State?
Yes. Apparently, they've already presented bills under that contract. So if we void out that contract, how do we approve the bills for, that they presented already?
Well, you can sub a vote to that on the old contract, or you can talk to them about adding some language about this new agreement being the total agreement. If there's some agreed amount of money that's owed, it's tapped into the new agreement. So if a prior service is rendered, the school district should pay Governor State, blah, blah, blah.
I will bring that for the next, next meeting, I'll float it past you, make sure the language looks good.
It's good.
All right. Any further comments, discussion questions? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session, discuss matters related to personnel. Ms. Suckley's first.
Second.
Second, and fourth, we roll call this subpoena.
Ms. Simmons?
Sure.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Yeah, Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed, the executive session for products, anyone else? Turn to the session. Okay, next in the agenda, we have approval of personnel report. I will entertain a motion to approve personnel report as presented. Ms. Morris is first. We have a second, second, Ms. Simmons. We roll call this subpoena.
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of reemployment of administration. I will entertain a motion to reemploy the administrators as presented.
Salute.
Mrs. Marks is first. Mrs. Horrith is second. We roll call this subpoena.
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of reemployment of first, second, and third-year probationary teachers. We do, it's one list. So if we can do that one as presented, and we do the fourth year rule. Okay, okay. So I want to, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution to reemploy the first, second, and third-year probationary teachers as presented.
Salute.
Mrs. Marks is first.
Perez.
Second, Mrs. Huckabee. We roll call this subpoena.
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of reemployment and tenure of four-year probationary teachers. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution to reemploy and grant tenure to the teachers who have successfully completed the four-year probationary period as provided by the Illinois School Code. The tenure will take effect on the first day of the 2016-2017 school term.
We have the time from today to be 2017...
Oh, I'm sorry. 2017, I read it right, and 2018 school term. Those teachers are?
Yes.
Michelle Boyce, Dory Elmore, Alicia Hill, Rosalynn McWhorter, Terrence McCuta, Michael Murphy, Alexandria Pirick, Carly Raisusis, Melinda Biscardi. Do we have a motion?
Odom.
Mrs. Odom, Mrs. Huckabee, we roll call this subpoena.
Okay, Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed. Congratulations. Thank you for attending service.
Hopefully they're all at home sleeping.
Hopefully.
Right here.
That's right, that's right. Formative assessment. Okay, next in the agenda is the honorable dismissal of educational support personnel. I will entertain a motion to approve the honorable dismissal of educational support personnel as presented. Ms. Huckabee is first.
Second.
Second, Ms. Odom, we roll call this subpoena.
Forrest?
Forrest?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have the honorable discharge of staff hired after December fifteenth, twenty sixteen. I will entertain a motion to approve the honorable discharge of staff hired after December fifteenth, twenty sixteen, as presented. Ms. Huckabee is first.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Horrith, we roll call this subpoena.
Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is passed. I will entertain a motion to end regular board meeting of education. Ms. Huckabee is first, and second, Mrs. Horrith. All members say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.